Appeals to Order. For anyone who might be here by accident for the Board of Review meeting, it's down the hall, go out the doors and turn to the right, but hopefully you're all here for the BZA meeting and not the Board of Review. Short introduction before we start tonight's meeting. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by City Council to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The Board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board, to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium and sign in on the sheet provided. The speaker should identify themselves with their name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example if they're a next-door neighbor, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant does have the right to appeal the Board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. And to introduce the staff and the members of the Board tonight, I'll start over on my left, your right. Stuart Filler is our recording secretary. This is his first meeting tonight, so we'll hopefully be gentle with him during the course of the meeting. Next is Glenn Clark, followed by Michael Bartnik, who is also the vice chairman of the Board. Thomas Strat, to my immediate left, is not only a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, but also our liaison to the planning commission. And myself, Dave Lambert, I'm the chairman. Mr. Neal is absent tonight, but next to him is Bill Fisher. And then the last board member is Ken Courtney, followed by Ken, our two other members of city staff. Paul Evans is the planning and zoning specialist, and Christopher Forsythe is an assistant city attorney. And with that, we will have the roll call, please. Mr. Filler?
This would be Mr. Bartnik here, Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Mr. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Neal. Did I say that right?
Yes.
And he's absent?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. Strat?
Here.
Six present.
Thank you very much. Even though we do not any longer do excuse the absences, I would mention Mr. Neal did notify myself and the city staff that he would be absent tonight due to business conflict. Now we go on to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion or any questions on the minutes from the February 15th meeting?
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
I move approval.
Mr. Clark has moved to approve the minutes. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Fisher seconds it? Any discussion or questions on the minutes? If seeing none, Mr. Filler, if you could call the roll call on the approval of the minutes from the February meeting.
Okay, that would be Clark.
Yes.
Courtney.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Strat, Bartnik. Sorry to rush you, Mr. Strat, Bartnik. Thank you.
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from the February meeting passes. And with that, we will go on to the hearing of cases. The first is a variance request, Harry Kwan from 38-921 Dequinder. And Mr. Evans, if you could present the information to the Board, please.
Yes, I could. Mr. Chair, with your permission, might it be appropriate, we have had a request from item number two to adjourn their case, excuse me, postpone their case till the next meeting. Perhaps if there's people in the audience that are going to be here for that, I understand the applicant said he wasn't going to be here. Should we perhaps address that in advance?
Okay. Is there anyone here who wished to address the Board on item A, which is a variance request from Harry Kwan at 38-921 Dequinder?
I'm sorry, item B has requested.
I'm sorry, item B?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry if I said item A. My mistake.
Yes.
Is there anyone here who wanted to address the Board on item B? Okay. All right. Yes, sir, come on up. What we would normally do is take your information you'd like to present us, but then it'll be up to the Board whether they want to postpone action on tonight's item. Yes, sir. So if you could introduce yourself?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt the person signing in here, but perhaps an idea is just postpone everything right now, including public comment. The applicant's not here, the applicant wished to postpone. Perhaps it would be prudent to just postpone everything at this point.
Okay. The city attorney suggested we postpone action on it. Would somebody from the Board like to make a motion on it? Mr. Courtney?
I'll make a motion, but if there's anybody here tonight on that item that cannot appear next meeting, then I think we should listen to them. But anyway, I'll move to postpone the item until the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Courtney has moved to postpone action on this item till the next meeting. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Bartnik has seconded the motion. And if I understand it correctly, if this passes, we will postpone action until the next month, but if somebody would like to talk tonight and can't make it at the next meeting, then we'll give them an opportunity to address it after the Board has acted on it. Is that the suggested way we approach this?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
If I could just ask a question of our city attorney. Mr. Forsythe, I think what our attorney is giving us an opinion on here is for practical or to dispense with business from the Board tonight, simply since the petitioner is not able to be here, therefore it would make sense to have all the business related to this issue at the same time, is my understanding, if I'm guessing correctly. But I think as perhaps if from a practical, a practical public perspective, I think it would probably be advisable for us to inform anybody that is here that perhaps could be here again next month when this item comes before us, that that would be more helpful to their cause in that it is, as this Board does conduct, you know, a number of varying issues on a regular basis, it's more helpful to keep, especially for old dogs like me, to keep everything compartmentalized, to understand, you know, what was said and how it was stated and how it can then be related to the petitioner's request. I just know that if you're, if anyone's coming before us tonight who wants to speak on this one issue, trying to have total recall in related to the petitioner's request next month would be difficult. That's a long way of saying, could you please address those concerns, sir?
Yeah, that's fine. In fact, under Robert's rules, if there's a motion to postpone, really, everything should be postponed. There should be no discussion. And then the item is addressed fully at the next available meeting. However, I don't have a problem allowing people who can't make the next meeting to come up and address the Board. But I think you're right. I think in fairness to everybody involved, I think the more prudent thing would be just postpone everything and let everybody speak at the next hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Courtney.
Anybody that can't make the next meeting could put their feelings in writing instead, and they have plenty of time for that, so maybe I may have created more confusion by saying let them talk. It'd be better if they put it in writing instead, and they do have time to do that.
Okay. Mr. Evans?
Right, we accept emails, and those email addresses are included in the public hearing notice if someone can't make it. And just for everyone's edification here tonight, the meeting date would be April 19th, which is the next scheduled meeting.
Okay. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Strat?
Yeah, I kind of feel that the people that did come tonight through the strain and everything else, I think that certainly they deserve the opportunity of at least expressing themselves tonight as well. It's through no fault of theirs that the postponement was actually taking place. So I feel for the people that did come tonight. I think they're entitled to and should be actually listened to, even though they, whether they can or cannot make next week's or next month's meeting. I think it should be really discussed, and then the adjournment sure can take place. I don't think that a vote should be taken, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, it's really in your discretion. If you want to open a public hearing, you have every right to do that. This matter will be republished for a public hearing? No?
No. If we adjourn it to a date certain, we do not republish or advertise.
Okay. All right. I'm mistaken.
Will or will not republish?
Will not. Will not. So my suggestion, unless the members of the Board object or staff objects, is we'll take the motion on, postpone it to next month, and then we'll allow anyone that wanted to address us tonight, they can do so. If they would prefer to wait till next month, it'd probably be more effective next month, but we'll certainly allow you to address us tonight on this issue. So unless someone from the Board objects, Mr. Strat?
Yeah, I wonder, can we still open the public meeting and not close it and still maintain a public meeting? Is that a possibility?
I don't know.
You could do that. I don't see why not, but I think it would be cleaner to either do the public hearing tonight and then take action at the next meeting, or postpone everything, including the public comment, until the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Mr. Strat.
I guess a question I'd ask, can we listen to the public without having a public, opening it to the public for a public meeting?
No, I don't think you can do that.
You can't do that? Okay.
Here's another question that I'll ask, kind of as another way to approach it. Could we postpone action on this item and then at the end of the meeting, when we have public comment, allow people to address the Board at that time? Would that be an acceptable approach? Make the city attorney in his last meeting here work for his money tonight.
Yeah. You know, I really, I really don't, I'm trying to think anything off the top of my head that would prevent that. I don't see, I mean, that's unusual, but I don't see anything that would prevent the Board from doing that.
All right. Well, is that acceptable? The Board then will act on the motion to postpone, and then at the end of the meeting, we'll take comments from the public on this issue? Is that the way you'd like to approach it?
I have a problem with that. We're going to ask these people to wait all the way to the end. I don't think that's fair. It's not their fault that this is being postponed. I'd like to hear from them.
Well, I agree. I just want to make sure we're not violating any particular rules, so.
I have a problem with that.
Yeah, again, off the top of my head, I can't think of any rule that would prohibit you from doing that, although like Mr. Strat points out, there are some practical problems in doing that. So, yeah, I guess the, really, the two options should be either, A, you postpone everything and have a public hearing at a later date, or you open the public hearing now, and you do the public hearing now and you take action at a later date.
Okay. Mr. Strat?
Yeah, can we open the public hearing and then postpone it after we hear everything? Postpone any action afterwards?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could certainly do that, yes.
Okay.
Right. But the problem, but the problem again is, and it kind of goes to what Mr. Clark was saying, you're going to have to, the planning department would have to send notices out again that the public hearing is being continued to the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Clark.
Would it be possible, Mr. Chairman, for you to inquire of the public that's represented here in the audience as to individuals who might be here on items A and B? And if there isn't anybody here, we could guarantee those good citizens that are here this evening on item B, that those issues would be dealt with in a fast-paced approach in that we're going to conduct it appropriately, but if there's not other people for public hearing issues related to A and C, then therefore we'll roll through these and we'll get on to the public comment related to B, you know, quickly, or anything that people want to refer to, which would be essentially people on item B. Is that possible?
Why don't we do this? That sounds like a possible suggestion if the Board would like to get an idea of what issues people are here for, and then we can kind of maybe adjust the agenda and maybe take it in that manner. Sir, if you could have a seat real quick, what I'm doing is have people raise their hand, and we can see who's here on each of these items. If you're here for item A, which is the variance request for 38-921 Dequinder, could you raise your hand?
Here.
Okay, so we have one person here on that, and you're probably the petitioner, I would assume?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Item B, if you're here for item B, which is the one for the St. Joseph Caldean Catholic Church, raise your hand. So most of them, it looks like, they're here for B. And then for item C, which is Minagada and Ashish Manik for 4821 Livinoy, if you could raise your hand? Okay. All right, so you've got an idea from, the Board knows how you might like to approach it. Mr. Courtney?
Could you also ask who would not be able to attend the next meeting?
Okay.
Because there's no sense in us or them, there's no sense in them coming up and making their comments now in the next meeting, telling us exactly the same thing for the pleasure of Mr. Neal.
Okay. If you're here for item B, which is the one dealing with St. Joseph Caldean Catholic Church, and you cannot attend next month's meeting in April, if you could raise your So it looks like they can all be here next month, so Board, it's up to you how you'd like to approach this.
I move the previous question.
Okay, so the motion now is, do we actually need a motion to move closed debate then? Just, so the item in front of us now is to postpone action on item B until the April meeting. Any further discussion or questions on this motion? Seeing none, the roll call, please.
Let me just write down the item. Postpone B.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Oh.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes to postpone action on this until the April meeting. Any further questions or discussion on this? And like I said, if you want to wait around on this item until public comment at the end of the meeting, you're welcome to, but you'd probably be better off just coming back next month. That way the issue is fresh in front of us at that time. And I apologize for the fact the petitioner was not able to be here tonight.
We were with them a few days ago. We are meeting with them, and they didn't tell us how come on this. We all came here. Please tell us why. They planned a meeting.
We will not be known as this pre-issued.
Correct, right.
Right.
Thank you.
But I'm sure if you want to give the call to the planning department between now and then, they would probably be able to let you know for sure whether or not it will be on the agenda.
Thanks.
And once again, I apologize for the fact we had to postpone action on this. Okay, now we're back to item A, which is a variance request from Harry Kwan from 38-921 Dequinder. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is yours?
This property is located near the southwest corner of Waddles Road and Dequinder. The subject property and properties to the north and south are zoned to office, and the property adjacent to the west is zoned single-family residential. The subject matter involves a portion of the required rear separation screen wall in the back of the property is circled with the blue on the map. More specifically, it includes that screen wall and the fact that a variance was received initially in 2004 by this Board to, from the requirement that that screen wall is an entirety be constructed of brick or of poured precast concrete in order to allow the wooden fence you see there. This Board renewed that variance in twice, and now the applicant is here to seek a permanent variance to maintain that wooden fence in lieu of the required face brick poured or precast masonry wall that's required to be placed between the office use of the property and the residential behind. And that's it.
Any questions for city staff? Mr. Courtney?
There's a, is there a pipe? My understanding is there's a pipe going through there. Is that correct?
Right, there are some documents on file from the previous issued variances that talk about either a pipeline or easement, and I'm sure the applicant can give us more details on that, but it did appear to be some of the reasons in the past why the Board granted previous variances to the construction materials.
Okay, my understanding is that we were not really allowed to place a brick wall over top of that because of the oil company.
Hi, I'm Harry Kwan, the owner of that building. I'll give you some background information.
Mr. Kwan, yeah, we have to deal with staff first, then we'll come to you, so, okay. Thank you.
Now, how much of this wall that we have there, the wood wall, how much of that is required because of the easement, and how much of it is the extra portion?
Well.
In other words, could it be blocked in less wood than there is?
We'd probably have to have the applicant testify as to the facts of the easement.
Well, thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just inquire, Mr. Evans, if you can go back to the photo, Mr. Evans, is the section we're talking about, the white section there in the middle exclusively?
Yes.
Okay. And so it appears that that's all, the entire stretch, the white and the beige or brownish color is all wood fencing, is that correct?
It appears the light colored is the wood fencing.
And then what is the material of the other coloring?
You know, I didn't look at it, but perhaps the applicant could confirm. I can presume it's probably concrete, but they can confirm.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, Mr. Clark?
No, thanks.
Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The record, as I see it, is it correct that it was initially rejected, then on reconsideration it was approved in, back in '04, '03, '04, is that correct?
Right, the first time that came before us, it was rejected, and then it appears some new information had allowed for reconsideration.
And following the reconsideration, is it correct that a prior Board did approve the variance for one year?
Right, there's actually an approval for one year and then two subsequent approvals, also on temporary bases, and now he's here to seek a permanent variance.
All right, and those two prior ones, for the record, there were public notices as reflected in the minutes and in the record, is that correct?
Right, yes.
And they were approved on the consent agendas?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's not true in fact.
Mr. Kwan, just a second, okay, just. Any more questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Kwan, it's all your show now.
Thank you. Mr. Evans introduced somewhat simplistic way. It was not that simple at the beginning. Year 2003, because of the city ordinance, we had to erect a brick wall. As you see, it's kind of a prison wall you see. So we tried to build, then all of a sudden we got objection from pipeline company Sonoco. We didn't know they have a right of way. So we inquire Oakland County, they come up with that deed, it shows that they have owner of right of way, crisscrossing my backyard diagonally. That's where the fence, they prohibit building any permanent structure, period. We are bound by, so if you recall, Mr. Najee, Sergio Tony and we fight against Sonoco in Pittsburgh, we lost. The matter is out of our hand. After that, we compromised, we presented the case to satisfy city as well as the Sonoco, what is the best way? And they suggested post a brick on the side end and use the wooden fence of similar nature and presented it can be removed anytime they want. That's the demand. We have no choice. Therefore, we presented the case and consulted with the city, Mr. Seymour, Seymour at the time, excuse my pronunciation, he has a little bit difficult last name as mine. So we all agreed, three party agreed, that's the proper way of doing so. We presented the variance issue to every two years. So we've been asking for variance renewed every two years. This is so time already. And then I thought it may be ridiculous, you know, wasting our textiles and money, we have no choice. Then why keep repeating those requests? So I asked Mr. Evans, why don't you consider putting a permanent variance? Because this is out of my control. I'd like to, as a matter of consistency, erect a brick wall. I cannot do that. So that's where we stand. So at the beginning, I was trying to submit, because of notification, every two years we had to submit another request for extension of it. It doesn't make any sense at all. So I asked him, why don't you make a permanent variance? Variance means nothing can do than just bend the rule a little bit. I don't want to bend the rule, but Sonoco dictates the term. We have no choice. That's where we stand right now. If you have any question or concern, I can answer your, you know, question or concern.
Mr. Courtney?
How, the wood fence, does that cover the entire area, or does that cover just the 20-feet variance?
Just entire area. There's wooden fence, easement dictates about 25 foot across. That's about four thirds of the entire fence area. It doesn't make any sense, you know, the four thirds of it, the wood fence, and then one third of the, you know, brick, it looks ugly. It's maintenance-wise, it's a nightmare.
Was that 20 feet or 25 that it extends, the wood portion?
I have to look at the record, but.
I think he, I was, I'm sorry to get in this, but I think he asked whether it was 20 or 25, and I did get a clear. The easement. What I was asking is.
I think it's on the document we attached to the hearing, yes.
I was asking if the easement covered, the wood fence covered the entire property, 125 feet, or whether it covered just the easement portion, 20 feet?
Sonoco demanded entire wall has to be structured, wood fence, no more, no changes.
But Sonoco does not own the entire property. They have an easement over 20 feet. The only thing they can control is that 20 feet.
That's correct.
So if your wood fence is longer than the 20 feet, part of it could be cement. Just the part that Sonoco controls can be.
Then how are you going to post the anchor point in the middle of it? That we discussed at the time is practically not a feasible or viable solution at all.
How much wood do you have out there now? 125 feet?
Entire section is wood.
125 feet?
Right.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to find out, how many feet? Okay.
We discussed the idea at the time, partially building, then the Sonoco demanded issue is swung open, if that's the case, because concrete cannot open it up. And create, presented so much headache at the time because one war. So we decided, okay, that's what you want, we'll do that way. We just yielded to their demand.
Okay, any more questions? Mr. Strat?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to ask legal staff. We have these permanent structures all the way across, a lot of easements throughout the city, but they're, I'm talking about fences. What is the definition? Do you know what the definition is?
Do you know what the definition is that we cannot, or cannot be built on that easement?
Well, it's actually, it would be controlled by the specific agreement. My understanding is, looking at the correspondence that was included in the packet, that there are two agreements that, that govern what can or cannot be built over that easement. One is dated in 1913 and the other is dated June 2nd, 1942, which...
19 what?
1942, which according to that agreement, just reviewing the correspondence, does not allow any type of permanent structure over on top of the easement.
A permanent structure, but what is the definition of a permanent structure, I guess? Is a fence considered a permanent structure? I, you know, I, because I know that, I have my own experience where we have utility easement and I built the fence over the utility easement, but it's just a utility easement, just like this is a pipeline. I don't know, I, I...
Yeah, I don't know if the city can necessarily, I mean, the provision for a permanent structure is located in those easement documents, and that's a private easement between, you know, that runs with the land, as opposed to being some sort of municipal definition.
Right.
So I think it, the discretion really is up to the people who control the easement.
Yeah, it's really controlled by the, by the private parties who, who came up with the agreement.
I guess my question is, what, what is, what is the agreement? What did they want? Permanent structure?
I, I don't believe we have a copy of the agreements in front of us. All we have are the correspondence.
I see.
Which was included in the, in the application.
If I recall correctly, that at the time we presented city ordinance, permanent concrete alike structure, that's quote unquote defined as a permanent structure. That's the objection from Sonoco Company. Wood fence is a removable structure, they said. That's their definition, not ours, so...
Any more questions from Mr. Kwan? Mr. Bartnik?
If I may, either the petitioner or the city, where does this pipeline go and what happens to the easement at 2950 De Quinder, 3960 Waldron, and Birchdale? I mean, drawing imaginary line from the page 37 of the record here, the, the survey, August 2003 of Chemtech West, it does show this 20-foot easement at a diagonal. So where does it, that runs across the northwest section of your property, but it's at an angle. What happens to the easement on the adjacent properties?
I...
Because a part of it looks like, if you were to, you know, if I'm to continue the line, it looks like it goes underneath the building adjacent to it on De Quinder, and it either goes into the street or goes underneath the houses.
Right, all the way to Ohio, yes, it does.
So...
At the time, so I asked Sonoco what happened to previous notice to us. Pipeline goes through under the building. Oh, that was then a long time ago, because we didn't have a tight control, because they didn't have those kind of pipeline problem per se. So we kind of losing the, you know, audience on their standard, now they are tightening up, that's what they said. They are enforcing their ignored standard, if you will.
Mr. Chairman, yes, Mr. Stratt?
You know, here we got a wall there, 20 feet wide, but that easement apparently goes underneath all the streets that are all the way across.
That's right.
Including going underneath Waddles. I believe that's Waddles. I mean, is that considered a permanent?
That's correct.
Seems to be more of a permanent structure than a, than a wall, you know? You know, so, you know, to me, I think that's really a stretch, but that's, I, I don't know. I, I doubt you.
Again, this is out of our control.
They're the experts.
City Attorney decided, oh, nothing can do about this thing. So that's why we decided to build a wood fence with anchor post and holding those wood fences. So...
Any more questions from Mr. Kwan? I have, I have one brief one here. One of your neighbors, it looks like from one of the adjoining subdivisions or the next street over is indicated, and obviously this is secondhand information, they said that the subdivision builder indicated that even though the fence is on top of the easement, they suggested something called a fence footer solution. Have you ever heard of that? Or have you talked to somebody that would help you provide some kind of a substitute for a permanent?
Six years ago, when we erect the fences, we asked, you know, the fence companies, the fence we build erected the post, reinforced, so we can swing open, break it down if they need. That's their requirement. We cannot build with steel or concrete. That's the condition we are bound by. So post on both sides, reinforced frame, and then we put the poster on it and we built the fences around it. I think city has a record on that and technical specification whatsoever. Complaint I hear is nothing but eyesore. I mean, to me, it's got nothing to do with the beautification of property or fence. If you would like to beautification, I'd like to paint the concrete wall like a prison wall to some beautiful colors. And also, I wonder why they didn't build a house next to us where pipelines running? I don't know why. That's only lab developer didn't build a house. There must be a concern. I want to leave it at that way. And if you look at the entire structure in a daylight, and then my wooden fence looks prettier than concrete wall to me, at least. I don't want to look like my neighbor's a prison wall, no, I don't think, excuse me. But that's my impression. To complain where their opinion is talking about eyesore.
Mr. Courtney? But the oil company did not object to you putting your parking lot over top of part of their easement?
I didn't ask them.
Okay, so if we put up a...
I'd like to in the future, yes, because they told me S part is not a permanent structure. You can just rip it up. Concrete wall is permanent structure, they say.
They can rip it up too.
Yes.
Just like they're going to do a wood wall if they need to go through it.
Just opening the wood wall, that's right.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Kwan?
I just have one clarifying question.
Yes, Mr. Fisher?
Did the pipeline require that the whole 25 feet be open and not bricked in?
I have to ask them, I don't know, I didn't ask.
Because easement...
At the time, yeah, at the time I asked them is whether we can build based upon city ordinance, whether we can build a concrete wall or not, that's what I asked. I didn't ask a partial, that's a nightmare. So that's why I asked Sonoco, can we build the concrete wall based upon city ordinance or 38 point whatever? They said no. The definition of permanent wall is any structure is concrete to build. Wood fence is not considered permanent structure, it's a removable structure. So those S part, you know, the parking lot, then that door is running strip over, that objective, they have, you know, the parking lot S part, and then your pipeline goes tip of the building runs to, you know, the city street. That's a long time ago. Now it's a different story, that's what, what I heard. So again, we don't have any control whatsoever, we have to abide by their demand, so we, so we satisfy city ordinance requirement as well as the, you know, right of way owners requirement, so we sitting in between mutual Jones. So I'm asking you to make a permanent variance allowable in this case because we don't have any control over the matter. That's what I'm asking.
Thank you for Mr. Kwan.
Thanks for your time.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Kwan? Okay, thank you, sir. And at this point then, we will open a public hearing, and is there anyone here that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And what indicate, before I call on any member of the board, is that we have three correspondents, I think everyone has copies of them, from three neighbors that are opposed to the variance that is in front of us tonight. And put that in the record. And Mr. Courtney?
The only thing that I can see that we really have to consider the least amount is 20 feet over top of the easement. The rest of it, if we want, could be cement up to there, our concrete wall, and then a 20-foot of wood, and then back to concrete, and leave it to Mr. Kwan to approach Sun Oil again and see if he can get away with going across the 20 feet with cement. Or we consider the whole parcel which has been in the past. I was originally in favor of doing concrete all the way, but when we found out Sun Oil had some control, I could, I went along with the idea that the wood fence was okay, but seeing that the neighbors are objecting to it, I, I would suggest that we now close the gap and just take, just give the variance on the 20 feet.
Any further question? Mr. Bartnik?
I guess for discussion purposes, the question is, how is it that the board approved the temporary extensions for the two times prior to that? How do we get around that is kind of the question open for discussion, I think.
You can give variances every year for the next 100 years. One year at a time if you want. If you mean, why did they do it?
Right.
Okay, they, they did it merely because they didn't want to give a permanent variance in case Sun Oil ever changed their mind. At least the ones that, you know, when I was here, that, that was the only thing that was really discussed, was given a variance and leaving it up as it is. There's no, there was no consideration, again, see, I think in '04, I think it was, that we passed the approval, and then the, the next two times, two or three times, there was no, no further discussion on it. There were, there were also no objections from the neighbors until this time.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really have a question for city staff, both the city attorney and the city administration, and that is, you know, in the documentation in front of me, I'm not seeing information as to what, what can't happen because of alleged pipeline that I don't know anything about, that, that I'm being told exists in verbal form without any certification that it's there, I'm not seeing it's not there, is, but this member of the board being informed via written communication by many citizens, it seems, and numerous citizens, the one lady writes that she represents herself and her next door neighbor, and even though we don't have a letter from him, I don't dispute the fact that she probably does. So having said all that, you know, how can this member of the board who represents the citizens at large in Troy feel like I could cast a vote in favor of a permanent, you know, easing of the zoning law for this petitioner without more documentation substantiating pipeline, what we can do, what we can't do, and, you know, I guess it comes down to these good citizens who took their time to communicate with us, their opinion, and they are taxpayers in the city of Troy, do have a right to expect that this board would enforce the zoning ordinance barring some unforeseen facts that they may not be aware of. So what, what does the city staff have to provide to us in that regard as far as substantiating these?
Just what's in the application. Those are, the applicant was provided the opportunity and took some time to go through the previous variance files and decide what he wanted to choose to present to the board. I know we made him copies of whatever he wanted from our previous variance files. I did not check previous applications compared to what he turned in this time, since this was a request for a permanent variance. Beyond that, the city has nothing more to offer.
I have a question for you. Talking, I think Mr. Stratt kind of touched on it as well, that this pipeline obviously runs through a significant part of the city of Troy, and it looks like just, and I think Mr. Bartnik also mentioned it, that it appears that the pipeline runs under other houses within, you know, half a mile of this particular fence. It does not appear that that easement precluded these developers from coming in and building homes. What is the city's responsibility in, in dealing with our ordinances and our planning when it comes to an easement requirement that's put in by a private company like Sun Oil I guess that's for both of you.
I don't know, I don't know if I can provide you an answer on that tonight. I'm versed in what we do for public easements and easements that's in control of the city, but if it's a question on private easements, I'm, I'm not sure how the city code would address that.
I would say the situation is analogous to homeowners association, where a applicant maybe gets a variance from this board but doesn't get approval from the homeowners association because there's an agreement in place that says you cannot do what you are proposing to do.
Okay.
I say it's, it's very similar to that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Stratt? You know, I really, I'm looking at the survey, and typically the survey indicates where the easement is located, et cetera. And typically, when you start a construction, one of the first things you do, you get a title company to come in, give you a title search, if there are any easements, et cetera, they will be notified. And they are actually liable, and my understanding of that, as an architect and working on this kind of thing, if there is an easement and it's not recorded properly. But again, I'll look at this, and I know it's going underneath the street, it's going underneath the building, as per the survey that we have in front of us. And you can see that right on, you've got it blown up right now. So to me, if it's going underneath the building and if it's going underneath the street, it's going underneath, you know, Maple, it's going underneath De Quinder, doesn't make sense to me that we should be granting a, a permanent variance on that, or any kind of variance. That's just my opinion on it. I think in order to be consistent with, you know, going throughout the neighborhood, I think it's legitimate what the letters that we receive, that's my opinion.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Clark?
I would just also say that, you know, there is the survey in file, and this information from the, regarding the pipeline from Sonoco Logistics. I just, I guess to my point earlier, I'm just not seeing information presented to this board would say that under no circumstances could you build a, you know, permanent buffer between the subdivision and the commercial property. I'm, I'm just not seeing that. And I understand if the petitioner wants that, he has the right to request that from us, but, you know, regarding the pictures that we've been seeing on the overhead and also in our packet, it does, in relation to the, the residents comments, how it is an eyesore, to me, it does look a little unsightly, and it seems like those are very nice homes there, so I can understand why people would be somewhat concerned there. But once again, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable granting a permanent variance without having some, you know, insurance policy that we, that's the only thing that can be there, which is a wooden fence versus masonry or precast wall.
If I may, there is a legal document exchanged between Sonoco and...
Mr. Kwan, just one moment. Does the board want to have Mr. Kwan come back up to answer any questions on this issue? Come on up, Mr. Kwan.
To help you understand, there's a document exchanged between City Attorney, Sonoco's Attorney because of this private right of easement situation. If you look at all those document bucket, that specifically specified our easement prohibit building any permanent structure. And City Attorney backed up because of that one. We ended up digging up their deed in Oakland County. City Attorney did due diligence. We get all the ammunition, but finally, they come up with this provision on their definition of permanent structure. We are bound by the, because those are private right of way easement, we got no choice. At the time, city legal department knew, oh, Mr. Kwan, we cannot do anything at all. We cannot enforce city ordinance on this matter. That's where we just backed out, come up with alternative solution. If you ask me to do extra work, we go back six years ago, where to redo... If you ask me to do extra work, we go back six years ago, we had to redo everything all over again, and the planning department, city legal department has all the documentation, I believe, if you go back and dig it out. The question is, why are we doing this, trying to overturn their right? I mean, as a community, municipal, you know, governing ordinance cannot override their private easement unless it is public whatever benefit. So that's my point of view. That's when I thought about putting up, you know, permanent variances, I have a reasonable request put on the table. That's what I thought. Otherwise, I wouldn't submit this, we're just year by year, two years, extension will go forever. I got no problem with that.
Mr. Bartnik, is you have a question?
I had a question for Mr. Kwan.
Yes.
Back in September of '03, there was a discussion about building, I think, I'm not sure if it was you or somebody else, but the idea was to build most of the wall as a brick wall and then to have a portion of it as a sliding wall.
Yes, there was a discussion.
What happened to that idea? I'm not certain, I'm not clear why that didn't go through.
Sonoco prohibited building any permanent structure. The sliding brick wall still remains on that the pipeline easement as a permanent structure.
According to who?
According to Sonoco.
Even though, if, when you say a sliding wall, you mean something that could be removed easily?
Take the whole open both sides, get rid of the entire brick wall, that's what they suggested. Otherwise, it is part of the sitting on permanent structure, and their easement is considered permanent structure.
Can you, do you know, can you construct the wall up to the easement and then have a section of the wall which is removable, or at least...
We'll go back to original question we discussed about 10 minutes ago, yes.
It is possible.
I don't know. We have to ask Sonoco, is possible to do that?
Well, to some extent, I mean, the way I'm looking at it is, this is what the ordinance says. I mean, that's...
That's why I need a variance on that ordinance, yes. That's the purpose of a variance, I think, I believe.
Mr. Stratt, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Do we have any proof of what you're saying? Have you got anything in writing from Sonoco?
Yes.
That says that you cannot build a fence?
Legal departments, all those exchanges...
No, I'm saying specifically that you cannot build that fence.
Yes, there is this explicit clause.
I don't think we have...
Is it in the application, Mr. Kwan?
No.
Is it in your application?
Sonoco exchanged, Sonoco and...
Is this document in your application? If not, is it something you might be able to provide this board at a future date? So A, is it in the application, the papers you gave us when you applied?
This is part of all the document when we have a heated discussion about this since 19, 2003.
Okay, so it's not in this, okay, it's not in this application.
Well, it might be, there's six...
It might be in the file, but honestly...
It's background information, if you will.
Yeah. It might be in the file. I haven't reviewed the entire file to see if this document existed, and I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable in attempting to do a review tonight and disperse the information to the board on such short notice.
Mr. Allen may have repeated recollection of those heated discussion. It lasted about eight months.
Any more questions for Mr. Kwan? Yes, Mr. Bartnik.
I'm just looking, I don't know if, this might be the letter you put up on the screen, page 40 and 41, which is enclosure four of the petitioner's application. Is that the letter?
Is that the one, Mike? The one I'm showing now from...
That's the one I'm looking at.
Yeah, that's the one.
Is that the letter? Can you tell Mr. Kwan?
I think that, that is upon the legal document we obtained from Sonoco, yes.
That's the letter that Mr. Stratt was asking for?
That does not specifically state about a wall, though. That's one of my points.
So is there another letter is what we're asking?
It's not a letter from Sonoco, has produced a document prohibiting permanent structure. That's their document. In our easement, no one can build permanent structure on our easement. That's this written documentation. It's part of, you know, legal document exchanged between city of Troy and Sonoco headquarters.
Can you get a copy of that easement to us?
I think it's in the, you know, file, in the original file.
If it's in the original file, Mr. Kwan, and then the board, we can certainly meet with Mr. Kwan, review the information to make sure that the proper documentation is provided to the board, and we'll certainly be more than happy to supplant this application at Mr. Kwan's direction.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, specifically, what I'm looking for is something that says specifically, the wall cannot be built. Not the structure, it's the interpretation of what is the structure. That's all, I guess, is the key here. I don't know, does that make sense?
That makes sense to me, and certainly we want to make sure if the board is in agreement with those comments, that Mr. Kwan understands as well. Obviously, he's going to be more familiar with, not only with what we have in the file, but maybe he has other documentation somewhere that the city does not have in possession. And we want to make sure he leaves understanding that.
Mr. Courtney? Yes, if he doesn't have something right now that says that, there's, I'd like to see it go to the oil company and tell them, we want something that says specifically that a wood fence is okay, but a brick one is...
I'm sure city legal department will dig up those from the file.
Well, you'll be looking at the file, but if it doesn't say specifically that you can't have a cement, but wood you can have...
Brick, concrete, permanent structure. Brick wall, concrete wall, that's permanent structure.
Wall, not permanent structure, wall. Any more questions for Mr. Kwan? Yes, Mr. Fisher?
I'm sure Mr. Kwan can answer, but, you know, with the new materials that we have for brick walls, with a modular wall, you know, where they have pieces of brick walls that would be put in place, would that be considered a permanent structure?
You know, I think the test of permanent structure is with the easement holder, but I am familiar with the types of materials you're talking about. Essentially, they install perhaps posts.
Posts and then they slide...
Posts and they slide the panels in as opposed to, say, a continuous footing.
And that way, if they need to get there, they can take those out and they've got their...
Probably, honestly, it's probably similar to the intrusion as a fence, as is up there now with the posts every few feet.
I'm wondering if that might suffice for the oil company?
At that time, I asked the city lawyer, when was ordinance written? I asked them, what purpose this ordinance provide the community's one safety, whatever? And nobody came up with a clear idea, but however their definition, this means separate commercial property from the residence property, protect residents away from commercial activities. There's no mention about beautification whatsoever. I don't know when the code is written. And all of a sudden, those kind of objection comes in, so one of the board member mentioned that one. At the time, beautification got no idea into the idea of a variance it is designed for. Therefore, we just ignored it. And to me, concrete wall is, looks uglier than white, you know, wood fence. It's look like a prison wall, to me. So I just looking at the technicality, where we can maneuver this thing or not, and we go back and look at it. At the time, city attorney and Mr. Stimek, Simon, he was adamant, we cannot give you a permanent variance because city code, we argued at the time, but I just lost, because city code says that we will give you temporary variance every two years, you come back, renew every two years. That's where we stand. So we're going back to square one again. If that's the case, let's dig up all those things, what, you know, what it means, what the variance means, what's the idea behind the variance is for, and we go by that. New technology, when the ordinance written, I don't believe such a thing exists. The spirit of this ordinance, what it's for, I got no idea. I'm still not clear. I understand it provide the protection for the residents right next to commercial entity. That's what I remember. That's good enough. I do my best to provide those things.
Any more questions for Mr. Kwan? Just a request, I assume the board is going to postpone action on this item to give you an opportunity to meet with staff. I can't guarantee it, but one thing you might want to do in addition to meeting with the staff over the, trying to determine where this letter is from Sonoco, is to meet with the residents and see what suggestions they would be willing to live with as far as a fence. I mean, it sounds like some of them had suggestions, like Mr. Fisher had, as far as a temporary wall that would look nice, and one of these people here that I'm sure you can have a copy of the letter, has a suggestion here as a way, a solution.
I'll do so, yes.
So I would suggest you look into that after the meeting tonight and meet with those residents to see what they had in mind.
Yes, I will follow with that issues, okay.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. Kwan? Yes, Mr. Clark?
Not a question but of the petitioner, but rather, I believe, it would be prudent for us to move to table this until next month's meeting for the petitioner...
Mr. Kwan, you can have a seat. We're going to take this back to the board now.
For the purpose of the petitioner providing more information and for the staff to facilitate discussion with him.
So Mr. Clark has moved that we postpone action on this until the April board meeting. Mr. Courtney seconds the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik? Yes. Mr. Stratt? Yes. Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
The motion passes. We will postpone this till next month's meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Courtney.
While they're digging out stuff to bring back, I think I would like to see that last easement document, which is, what, the 1941 one, if you have a copy of that? If it's in there. There's, it may not be.
Mr. Kwan, did you...
Yes.
Okay. The 1942 easement document?
Whatever, yeah, the last.
As referenced in one of tonight's exhibits, the letter from Sonoco.
Yep.
Yep, I've got that on my notes, and it sounds like Mr. Kwan is also an understanding of what we'd like to see.
Any more documents or information the board would like to have provided before the next meeting on this? It sounds like we've covered it, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Item C, a variance request from Minal Gada and Ashish Manik at 4820 Livenoy. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is on the east side of Livenoy, south of Long Lake Road, as evidenced in the red outline on the overhead. A closer view gives you an idea of the layout of the property compared to the surrounding area. The subject property and properties surrounding, including across Livenoy Road, are zoned single-family residential. The zoning for this district requires lots to be a minimum of 100 feet wide. The applicant is proposing to split the existing lot into three new properties, as evidenced on this illustration. The first lot will be over 100 feet wide, but the second and third lots will be 85 feet wide. So he needs a lot width require, excuse me, variance of 15 feet in order to be successful tonight on his lot splits.
Any questions for Mr. Evans? Yes, Mr. Bartnik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next to the survey in the materials here is a comparison of 4820 Livenoy and nearby properties with the actual frontage, acreage, depths, and location of various parcels of property. Was that prepared by or given to us by the applicant or by the city?
Is that the spreadsheet you're referring to?
Yes.
And that's provided by the applicant.
Okay, have you had a chance to look at it and verify the information?
I haven't verified the information. I've looked at it. We can certainly verify it if the board would like us to, but normally, we have no idea what kind of information is going to come in on these variance requests. Perhaps the applicant can provide any additional information we might have, but we haven't verified it at this time.
Well, maybe I could ask it a different, different way.
Sure.
On, can you tell us what are the widths of the, the lots across Livenoy there?
Lots, 4820 across Livenoy there, I don't know if their lot numbers or addresses, but
41, 42, 43, 55, Scottland subdivision number two, and Partridge Run subdivision, Belzer subdivision, and the replant of Belzer subdivision. What are the minimum lot lines, lot widths on those?
They have the same zoning, so it is 100 feet for those areas. So 100 feet is the minimum lot width for those areas.
How about across Livenoy? For example, they point out 65 Aberdeen has a partial frontage of 68. Is that something we can look at here?
I can look at it, and we'll get an answer to you in just a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Courtney?
Yes, one question is, if the person wanted to split into two, they wouldn't need to be here with us, would they?
Well, they certainly have enough that if they split the lot widths in equal sizes, they wouldn't, yeah, it's 285 feet lot width as it is right now. So they can get two, they have enough math to get two lots without a variance.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from staff? I have a real quick question, and this may reflect the number of years going back, and maybe Mr. Stratt knows this right off the top of his head, but I'll direct it to you first. Is this piece of property that we're looking at too small to accommodate a site condominium plan?
I don't know.
Okay.
We could check, but I didn't come prepared to answer that.
Go through the board and see what they want to do on this, so. All right, is the petitioner here, or the petitioner's architect, maybe? If you could go ahead and sign in, if you, the petitioner wants to come up with you as well, they're welcome to join. Sure, come on up. Okay, okay. Just go ahead and sign in?
Already signed in.
Okay, and then go ahead and introduce yourself and make your presentation to the board?
First of all, thank you very much for all your time. My name is Ashish Manik, she's my wife, Minal.
Can I ask you to give it slowly just for a moment? Ashish what?
Ashish Manik.
M.A.N.E.K.
You're right.
Thank you. And your wife's name?
Is Minal Gada, G.A.D.A.
Thank you.
And gentleman Bob Lynn from Urban Consult.
Yes, Bob Lynn with Urban Land Consult. Good evening.
My apology for mispronouncing your name.
You guys did perfectly fine.
Okay, good.
We are here to, we moved to Troy in 2005, and we bought this property in 2007. With this application, I would like, thanks, Paul, he helped me out, get some more understanding, and this is my first time, so I might have stumbled here and there, but Bob helped me out, and what we want to do is see if that can, it's a unique property, it's a unique lot, it has quite a history with it, but we'd like to make it in three lots, and it does meet all the square feet requirement and the variance square feet requirement. Correct me, Bob, if I go wrong.
That's correct.
But the only, on the front side of it, rather than 100, we are requesting 85. And that's the, on the supporting documents we have it, the different, the surveyed, survey diagrams submitted.
If I could interject a couple of comments on here, maybe to help things. This property in question here, this was part of a farm back in the 50s, this property was subdivided. The northern part of that was in 53, and the easterly part back in 55. So these lots were considerably larger, but if you got to go back that 50-some years ago, this was on septic sewers. So these properties were in different conditions. So you're looking at lots that fairly, you know, exceed your zoning requirements, but that was because of other conditions, other constraints. But you also notice a lot of these homes weren't built until the 80s, probably when the sewer and water was brought in to better serve the homeowners there. I guess my point is, is the property could be developed into three lots, and I don't think it would be a detriment to the surrounding areas. It's pretty well screened, there's a lot of trees and brush to the east. Across the street, you have lots that are more traditional, R1B, they're 100-foot lots. But that was planted in the 90s, so things have changed. So what we're trying to do this evening is to see if we can, one, preserve the farmhouse that these people live in, and provide a couple of home sites south of that site and not be a, you know, adverse effect on the community.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Courtney?
Yes. The question on site condos is, is there enough area to do that under our ordinance?
It was very challenging because if I have to bring a road in with a cul-de-sac, I don't have any room hardly left to build on the houses. I have very shallow areas unless I were to come up with some unique feature of a cluster development or something like that. We did all kinds of sketches for Ashish over the past year, looking at different scenarios, but everything required a variance. And the simplest thing to do, if he likes to live in his home, he spent a lot of money fixing it up, is, you know, granting the variance for the two homes south of the old farm.
Of course, you wouldn't need a variance at all if you just split it in two.
That's correct, but.
And you'd have two sites.
Right. So that's.
But anyway, the condo would not work.
Not very effectively because more variances were needed. We spent quite a bit of time with Mr. Evans and their staff trying to figure out, you know, how can we best, you know, move ahead without, you know, tearing everything down and still, you know, is that going to be good for the community? I don't know. This house is what, how many years old?
It was built in 1901.
But if you split in two, you'd still keep the old house.
You could, yes.
Yes.
And if I.
It just wouldn't maximize your profit.
Actually, your suggestion, if I can interrupt Bob, is that it's not the question of maximizing the profit. If you recommend me to build a condominium, I could put four out there rather than three.
Well, yeah, but you just said you couldn't do that.
Yeah, because of the various, different type of variances required on the road and the cul-de-sac inside and.
Yeah, okay, if you can't do it, then you can't put the four there or three.
That's right.
You're still stuck with, without getting a variance, you're stuck with two without maximizing your profit.
And Mr. Bartnik, you had asked a question, so feel free to ask me a question about the Excel sheet. I was very instrumental in developing that sheet of the lot size and everything. So please feel free to let me know, ask any question about it.
Okay, thank you. So could you answer the question?
Yes, absolutely.
About the other lot sizes across the street on Livernoy?
Absolutely. I have that Excel sheet in front of me. On the last column, you have the addresses and city's GIS system. I relied 99% on that system, and it is very, very helpful. So on the first column is the lot identification, if I go to the GIS system. On the last column is the addresses, and in between, I have tried to make it as a what years they were constructed and which subdivision they belong to. Also, I have made some comments as how many feet they are apart. So if you look at towards the bottom section of the last three, which is the newest construction on the Livernoy, which is like around less than 200 meters or less than 200 meters from my property, which I had brought the printouts of that also. So those lots, they are unique, like mine, and they were, they are like 56, 56 or five and 56 or one. In fact, I have, if that is the, if that is the point to be addressed, then I have printouts for all board members in all individual copies, which could be shared. So this is, so that's why I've tried to bring you to the picture like that.
Thank you.
I have more copies.
Thank you.
Ashish?
Yes?
Are these the same copies that you provided with your application?
Yes.
So they are, they should be in the packet, then. As a matter of fact, I'm displaying them here.
Really?
Just so everyone's aware.
You are absolutely right. I didn't know.
Just a point of clarification, that's okay?
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just want everybody to know that they might not need to look at anything again.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Courtney? Does the staff know offhand if the subdivision, if this subdivision was plotted with lot averaging or?
The subdivision he's in? I don't know. I didn't research that.
On either side, the one that he's talking about having the small lots, whether that was done.
Across the street?
Yeah. If that was done with lot averaging, people there have paid for some open space elsewhere. So, okay.
Again, my apologies if I, because this is the first time I'm doing it, and so Paul really helped me out. So there are other, in that same Excel sheet, on the other side also on the opposite, it says on the opposite subdivision where you mentioned about the frontage. So I use the GIS system, what it was showing, the amount. I should have added the line numbers on the first column, but where it says on the subdivision column, where it's an opposite subdivision. So I have used that in the front side also as an example, which is the more latest one, it is in 1990s. Yeah, I hope this answers some details.
Thank you.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I guess I have a question for Paul first. Paul, I'm not familiar with our zoning ordinance right now with the 11.37 setback on a side yard setback. Does that fall within the code zoning ordinance?
Oh, yes. It's 10 feet minimum.
Is that what it is, 10?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he drew those building envelopes to show.
Okay.
What.
And what he is showing, is that in the same zoning district, all these that he's using a comparison?
As a matter of fact, every, you know, I don't know if all the properties on his spreadsheet are in the same zoning district because I did not verify it.
I don't know that either, yeah. The other thing I was going to say, you're going to tear down the barn, I assume, then?
No.
One of the spooks has to happen.
See, what that barn mentions out here is.
It has to go, it's on the property.
Yeah. Actually, there used to be a big barn before I moved in, so that is not a barn. It's a type of mistake. It is a, it is a small, a small storage property.
Shed.
A shed, a shed.
You'd have to remove it, I assume.
Yes, yes.
You'd have to remove it.
Yes, yes.
See, I'm, going back to Mr. Lambert's comment, you know, you don't have to have a turnaround for two homes. You know, you could have a single drive come in and, as mentioned before, and have a condo. It doesn't make sense to me. I think that you could really have a condo development, a site condo, very easily. Two drives. I mean, you can have a single drive, private drive, going in and split into two driveways very easily. You wouldn't have to go through all this. I don't understand it. I don't know, maybe Paul, I guess you did talk with Paul, and maybe you talked with the planner?
No, actually, we did not talk.
Did you meet with Mr. Savadon, the planning director, regarding that?
I don't remember his name.
I think it was him, yeah. Because I remember seeing you guys at the counter, and I know we didn't meet regarding.
Yeah, because see, that, what we were considering is a cul-de-sac for the road, and that was the main hurdle, basically.
Why do you need a cul-de-sac for two homes? You don't need a cul-de-sac for two homes. Trying to minimize the curb cuts off. Well, you can have a single drive and then split in two for only two homes? I mean, that makes sense. I mean, why, I don't know. I'd be surprised, but it doesn't make sense to me. But anyway, I hope you explored that and talked with Mr. Savadon, who is the planning director. He'd be the one that would be able to tell you, but it seems to me, I don't have any problem, but I just, I think you're going through a lot, it would be a lot easier for you if you went with the condos. I really think it would be.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Courtney?
I think when they discussed the item with planning and they're talking about the entranceway, they were talking four units, not two. If they're talking two, I think they would find what you're saying is true, that they don't need, that they can do it with two.
Sure. Two units or three, three units?
Well, you still have the one drive anyway.
Two plus the house.
Two units plus the house, yeah.
Two new units.
Two plus the house.
Two plus the house.
Yeah.
I have no problem either way. I don't, I just don't understand.
Any more questions from the board for the petitioners?
One other comment. Seems to me that you can use that existing drive and curb cut that you got right there and split off into two. I don't know why you couldn't.
I have one question for you. There's one drawing of, it looks like the existing home and then two newer homes off to the side. It says plot A, plot B, and plot C. I don't know if that's on page maybe 92 for.
Yes, sir, yes.
Yeah. Is the intent to combine one or two of those drives so that you minimize the number of curb cuts?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, sir.
That was my concern about having three lots on there.
Yes, there is 100% intent on that. Yes.
All right. Although I think Mr. Stratt is correct that the site condo plan would have given the same kind of advantage. But that was the only question I had. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, why don't you have a seat, and then we'll open up the public hearing and see if anybody is here on this matter.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to address this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and to the best of my knowledge, we don't have any correspondence from any neighbors on this issue. Bring it back to the board for any questions or further business. Mr. Courtney?
Yeah, I would, I would like the table this until the next meeting and suggest that they go back to planning and talk about doing just what Mr. Stratt has indicated, two-site condo. That way, they don't need a variance.
Is that a motion you'd like to make, or is somebody else?
I.
Is that a motion, Mr. Courtney? Okay. Mr. Courtney has moved, and Mr. Barton has seconded the motion to postpone action on this item until the next board meeting in April.
April 19th.
April 19th. Any discussion from the board? I guess it sounds like we'd like you to pursue the site condo plan as an alternative before you come back to us again and determine whether or not that's maybe a better solution for you.
Can I approach my?
Sure, come on up.
Okay, as I said, I'm doing this for first time, so basically what we are proposing here is that, Paul, can I request you to get the layout of?
Oh, the, yeah, let me get that up for you. Hang on.
Thank you, Paul. So what I understand is that what you're asking, a very good suggestion, is that this, the current driveway which I have, just continue all the way out there and make one lot here and one lot here? The side condo, is that what I understand?
But anywhere as you want. You've got enough area. You can put one in the corner and one in the front.
Okay, okay.
You have to talk to the planning director.
Yeah. Again, since that happened like around eight months ago or so, but the planning, I don't remember the, what if they, for some reason, they might have told us, no, you cannot do it? Or what if, what if that scenario? I mean, can we have a, what happens in that case that if they said, no, you know, you cannot do that?
That would answer the board's question. At that time, then we would take up the proposal for the lot split that you requested, and that gives us assurance that that's the only real alternative that you have.
Okay.
So that's why we want to make sure you pursue the other route first before you come back and ask for the lot split. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Evans?
Just to comment, you may have to go through a review and approval and denial process, depending on the nature of your proposal. We'll see what we can do for you, but I just want everyone to know that you may have to go through the process and be denied, because as Mr. Stratt indicated, there could be a number of ways to do this, and possibly one way might work and another way might not. So I think what I'm hearing the board perhaps intimate is that you researched the alternatives for the viability, and it might come to that point. I just wanted to make everyone clear on that tonight.
Because one thing I do remember is that when I had talked to the planning department, they said that at that point of time, yes, I, you reminded me, so that I was requesting for four, and what they had mentioned to me is that, what they had mentioned to me is that I would have to go through rezoning, and they were against of rezoning it. And so I said, okay, what then, what is the best way? Then he said that, you know, go with the code, that board zone, see if you can get the splits approved, and so.
Something like that.
Yeah, because, again, since we went for the planning department and like we went through this duplex and fourplex, and we, I mean, we were denied all of those things. So we did have a meeting with planning department and evidently at that time.
And it's possible that if it was eight months ago, maybe Mr. Savadon did talk to you about a site condo, and you, the two of you decided that wasn't the way to go, but I guess the board wants to know if that's definitely their recommendation that this is the better approach on this. So that's what I think what the board is looking for from now.
With the number of units we're talking now, not with the number that you were talking.
I agree.
Okay, okay.
So again, I personally, I'm not 100%, I have not understood myself, but what Paul mentioned, but if I can come and meet with you later in the week, would that be?
Well, most definitely. I think that's what we're here for. You bet.
Yeah, okay. Because, so this, as I understand, this is neither approved nor denied.
Correct. It will come back to the board next month for action. Either you may decide at that time to withdraw it, to pursue the site condo, or come back to us with this for the lot split at that time. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Stratt?
Just one other, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one other comment I might make. There is another option that you might consider, but that you have to come before the planning commission for, and that would be conditional rezoning. So what you put down, you have to build, but that's another option you might want to talk to the director about.
Conditional rezoning?
Yes, okay.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we need a roll call, I believe, on the motion to postpone action to the April meeting.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
The motion to postpone until April passes, and that concludes the variance requests for tonight. Do we have any communications? I believe the, Mr. Evans laid on our desk here information from the Michigan Planning Commission or Planning Association for us to look at.
Right, yes.
Any other communications that you have for us?
None.
Okay. Next public comment. Is there anybody that would like to address the board on any issues that did not come in front of us tonight? Okay, seeing that. Any miscellaneous business from the board? Just to thank Mr. Forsythe for his service to the city, and I believe this, tomorrow is your last day working for the city, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a pleasure working with all of you the last several months, as well as working with the planning commission for the last, I don't know, Tom, what was it, two and a half years?
Yeah, I guess.
Something like that. And it's been a pleasure working for the City of Troy for the last five and a half years, so I thank all of you.
Thank you.
Chris has been great to work with.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Chris has been great to work with over the years. I've worked with Chris on and off for about four years now in various capacities, and certainly our loss will be his new endeavors gained.
Mr. Stratt?
I would concur. I really want to thank you very much for your efforts also that you've been, as long as I've been on the planning commission as well. I did want to make one comment, though, if I may, in regards to the postponed item on the church. The planning commission, it was presented to the planning commission, and the planning commission unanimously, I mean, we all were opposed to the plan that was submitted, and we gave them solutions and we gave them some options that we thought would work, but yet it seems like they just ignored us, and they come before you. I was just appalled. I received a couple of calls from a couple of other commissioners that knew that it was coming before us tonight, and I just can't believe that. I mean, it was just, we can't make a reclamation, but I can tell you that nothing had changed. They came before the planning commission. That was just not.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps this is more appropriate to take this up next month.
Okay, thank you. Any more business to come in front of the board zoning appeals? Yes, Mr. Courtney?
Let me, even though we're going to wait until next month, if we were to approve it, don't they still have to go?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I really, discussion on this should.
Postpone this until next month, so. All right. Any more business for the board zoning appeals? Seeing none, we are adjourned until the April meeting.